You're good to go. Perfect. Thank you very much and welcome to our, what are we today? The twenty second, April twenty second, twenty twenty five's council regular meeting. I will call this meeting to order, Madam Clerk.
This regular meeting now open at six oh two P M. Moved by Council McDonald, second by Deputy Mayor Densham.
All in favor, motion is carried. Moving, or is there any opening remarks? There's a council, I will step in and have one in regard. So there's nominations that are being asked by, from the township on, it's a senior month. What month, Pierre? Is it May or June? May. So with our seniors month, they're requesting if there's any nomination from one member of our community that would, so if I can request, for our red directors maybe putting it out to the rec committees. And this way it would go across all of our communities and see if there's any, and then the decision can be taken from the members of council next week to submit for, by the end of the month. Does that sound good? June. Perfect. Thank you. So are you good with that? Mister Tibot, thank you very much. And now moving on to the adoption of our agendas with either amendments, additions or deletions, Madam Clerk.
Be it resolved that the agenda be approved as presented, moved by Council McDonald, second by Council Vigeli.
Any questions on our agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, motion is carried. Is there any disclosure of community interest or nature thereof? Seeing none, there is no public meetings or delegation. So moving on to the adoption of our minute of our, sorry, of our previous minutes, Madam Clerk.
Be it resolved that the following minutes be approved as presented, regular meeting, April eighth, twenty twenty five minutes, moved by Deputy Mayor Densham, second by Council McDonald.
Thank you. Any discussions on our previous minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, motions carried. Item eight point one, the adoption of minutes of our committees and local boards.
The council of the township of North Stormont accept the minutes of February sixth, twenty twenty five from the raising region conservation authority board of directors committee meeting. And the board meeting highlights of April third, twenty twenty five for information purposes, moved by Council Vigeli, second by Deputy Mayor Densham.
Thank you. Any questions or complaints? Because if you want to complain, any discussions, seeing none, all in favor, motion is carried. Item nine, receiving of monthly staff's report and recommendations.
The council of the corporation of the township of North Stormont receives report fire zero one dash twenty twenty five from the fire chief as an information report regarding a joint initiative between neighboring fire departments, moved by Deputy Mayor Densham, second by Council McDonald.
Thank you. So I will request, we've got the motion on the table. I'll get Nancy to read through the report and then if there's any question, does that sound?
You want me to read the reports, sir, or just summarize?
Summarize. We're not going to go word for word.
Oh, my God. Just so just my apologies. We have one of our chiefs that's late, so I'll summarize in a very slower fashion that I'm usually hearing me speak. But this is, you've heard me say in the past that some of us in the, in the S D G area, I've been working closely together to try and minimize our costs to the departments. We are very aware that we are, you know, very aware that ratepayers want the best of our tax dollars. And with that said, some of us have been working together on training. We've already experienced the training and exchanging of stations and departments. I've sent to them, they have sent to us. And it's been working really, really well. With that said, we are also hoping that we can broaden those mergers of services by exploring other services like our fleets are so much more. And as you are very, very aware, there he goes. So we've, we've been working diligently and trying to merge our services and reduce costs across the board. Some of us have succeeded in doing so in a very very successful manner, I must say, in training. And with the accreditation coming and the cost of accreditation is coming forward, it's getting more and more expensive. So we've been trying different things and I have some of the chiefs with me here. But at the end of the day, we just wanted to counsel to be very aware that it's not just talk we're doing. We're very much practicing what we've been preaching and it's been a challenging time because, you know, as you're very aware, some of the departments are, don't like change. And we've been able to do it successfully where it's been accepted. The chiefs will be meeting with my team on the twenty fourth, which is this week, my training team, and will be explaining to them the process that we're going. The other nice thing is that some of our resources as well, we're trying to merge. For example, South Dundas may have a piece of equipment that's in the thousands of dollars that we may not purchase or use on a regular basis, but we can borrow from them and vice versa. So now we're doing an inventory list of what they have versus what we have. And try to exchange those trainings and those tools so that we don't have to start expend expenditures that are not required. For example, we also have specialties in my area, like asthma is a specialty that we may be able to utilize and train from. But that another service may not require that as much as we would. So, for example, mutual aid, automatic aid, South Dundas, South Stormont have water resources, they have the teams in place. We can maybe get some of the lower level awareness training and then get a contract with them for the, the water rescue portion of things. So this is the things we've been looking at, what they have versus what I need and what they, I have versus what they need. So this is just to, to show you that we are being fiscally responsible to our ratepayers and as a promise to council, we have been working diligently towards that goal and training is one of those goals. And we wanted to present it and I wanted to present the cheese and I have one missing actually, but you all know him, Dave Robertson. I know he's often at your county's meetings, so, but too much, too behind me, I have Chief Jeremy Alfred Aldred Hughes, sorry, from South Dundas and Craig Rainstrick from North Dundas, who's recently been appointed as well. And they have facilities that may, we may be able to use and vice versa for us. So I'm very excited about this. I think it's a huge resources amongst all of us. And I think it's a good initiative and it's a good focus on us. I'll take any questions.
Good. Thank you. So no back. So everybody's heard it very often. So I was on the department for a long time. But we used to have a, a good mutual aid agreement back in the day that was, and I think we've gone a little bit away from that. And it's something I think that we would, I would like myself to see that come back. So, and it wasn't just fun because we use that curling bond spill. We had all kinds of stuff, but at the end of the day, it was the curling stuff was all networking towards, I think, collaborating, working together and the fact that you're here tonight. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to that comes. So from, I'll, I'll take questions from, from council. Right now, this is a report that we're receiving for information purposes. Nancy, is this something that will, when would we expect? Is there something coming back eventually with a plan or like right now, what's the, what's the next step?
Bylaw, which is going to include the level of services that you want. Once those levels of services have been established in North Stormont, then I'm going to be able to see what the accreditation requirements are going to be versus the requirements of council. And then all of us are going to sit down and say, okay, what do you need? What can you teach? What can I teach? What? So we're going to be sitting down and reviewing everything that's left. Because F F one, as you know, firefighter one is not the end. It's a huge part of it. It's most part of it. But now moving forward, we need to get the rest of the accreditation and that's what we're going to be working for.
Any questions from members of council? Go ahead, Counselor Vigeli.
A great initiative. I think this is an amazing first step. Obviously, the, the more collaboration just makes everybody stronger, each part of our, of our region. One question is, and just going through and obviously with the chiefs that are involved, has there been any discussion with, with South Stormont and North Glengarry? Or are they not interested? Or is it a work in progress?
It's a work in progress. They have strong training grounds. Obviously, North Glengarry has their own facility. So they have quite the facility at their estate. So it is a work in progress. Chief Aldred Hughes and myself have practiced this for the last year. We've been integrating this program, seeing how it would work, seeing what, what's missing, what's not missing. And then we sat down with North Dundas Chief Rainstrick and then, oh, look at this, let's see what we can do with that. So now we're just sort of introducing the process. And then in going to Toronto and talking with Dave Robertson, he went, let me see what we could. So he's going to possibly join in, in a portion of it that fits his needs. So they're going to be reviewing what they want to do and what their needs are and then come back to us. And it's again, if it works for them, it works for them and it may not work for everybody.
You go ahead, Counselor McDonald.
I just wanted to add to the, the support for this initiative and I really appreciate you bringing a report to give us a little bit of insight. So we're aware because we do sort of hear about things usually around budget times, right? When we're all trying to cut costs and we talk about doing this kind of stuff. But seeing it actually coming to light and seeing the support of your colleagues that are here with you is really, really nice. And not definitely dollars talk. So I mean, getting some numbers on, on how much you're saving and how much this initiative is, is saving taxpayers would be helpful to continue to tell that story, which is a good news story. But more than that, it sounds like creating a depth of training capacity. And also creating access to equipment that we might not be able to have on staff because we don't always need it, water rescue, whatever. Like it's nice to know we could have access to that stuff at cost and the idea of only having, you know, one taxpayer, it's, you know, why have five types of the same thing if, if we don't need it. So I just love the efficiency and the collaboration and really support you and appreciate you bringing the update.
Sheen, go ahead, Counselor Sheen.
I'd also like to show my support in this. I think it's a great initiative, cost sharing, resource sharing between our neighboring municipalities. I know in the past, you've reached out as far as Ottawa, which is a long way to bring people in throughout. And if we can get those resources from next door for the training, it's a great initiative. I have full support of that.
Thank you. Now, you're going to see Chief Robinson walk in right in the end of it.
Go ahead.
I don't want to be left out. No, it's great. Thanks, guys, for being here and thank you for collaborating. And I'm looking forward, as we said, to, to what's the next step? What is the plan? Where is it going to take us? And, and the more affordable it is, obviously, the, the better the ratepayers will, will appreciate it, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's all been good so far. So I have the last word. So my view is an F P A is a word that scares the crap out of me because it just seems like they, the legislated, the mandates, the, it never ends. And when you look at small municipalities like North Stormont, little bigger with North Dundas, South Dundas, but it is where we cannot go in a direction where we have full-time firemen sleeping at the frigging fire hall when we respond to eight thousand household in our case a year. So again, it's something that to have the chiefs come together and see where we can minimize, still meet the, the requirements, but at the same time, try to do stuff in-house and, and, and work towards, together towards keeping the, because again, it's nice and easy to raise taxes. But it, it comes a point, it's fire, it's roads, it's rec. Everybody's trying to get a piece of the pie. And I think doing it this way, everybody's working together and that's what I'd like to see. So congratulations on at least coming to the table and hopefully we will, we will take this further. So moving forward. So now I guess the motion's on the table. So are everybody in favor of accepting the report to the information? Motion is carried. Thank you, Nancy. Item nine point two, twenty twenty four wastewater systems annual report.
At the council of the town, North Stormont receives report P W O six dash twenty twenty five from the public works superintendent and accepts the annual report from the Ontario Clean Water Agency for the wastewater systems in Chrysler, Finch and Moose Creek. Moved by Deputy Mayor Densham, second by Council McDonald.
Thank you. So with this report, so we were asking if we wanted Dawn to, a lot of time we get Dawn, she sits there to ask one question. So I basically stated that we can, if there is questions, they could be asked and then we can forward it through. Blake, I think, has talked to Dawn, so maybe he has something he can answer, but we can always get our information. And last is countless, or Deputy Mayor Densham brought up the fact that possibly we could get, anytime we get a report, have Dawn bring up more like the pros and the con, what's, what's the risk that she feels is, and if you have something in front of us, it just helps counsel. So that's something that we're going to move on for, for our next report to have done. So with that said, any questions or discussions on that? Go ahead, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Densham.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, like I say, most of the questions I think could be anticipated, like when you have a graph that shows here's what the average is, or well, I guess average and then show the monthly, it's going to be a smooth bit. But if you have one that says, here's capacity and we're over a capacity on certain months, I think you can almost anticipate a question coming up on that. So if somebody could read through the report, because what I find with this, it's not just water, but there's some other technical reports we receive where they describe. It's much like the audit as well. They describe in great detail how they pull all the numbers together, but it doesn't really answer the question. So should I be concerned or should I? Is, is there anything I need to be aware of? And that's what I would really love is just a one-page summary on that. But there were a couple of spots specifically on sections. So, yeah, on section five point one. Yeah, anyhow, it's, 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 it's things like suspended solids, total phosphorus, Haldol nitrogen, where in November, everything seemed to go way up in, in the high average. And I don't know, should I be worried about that? Or is, is that just because of the time of year?
Through the mayor, I did discuss this with Dawn. And when I was looking at whenever I was talking about suspended solids, it's basically the discharge, well, that is concerned about. And it's, it has it going up. I'm looking at seven point three on page seven. Is that where you're coming from? Five point three. Okay.
One of these on page three.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, like, like you look at it, it is the monthly results. It's the overall picture of the, that we, we treat it and it gets colder in, in November and that. So you, it will climb up on us because it's, it's not naturally breaking down with the sun and the heat. And but the main goal, like when you look at that, would be the, the main would be what our discharge is. Like whenever we have discharge in the springtime. So and basically that's, we're talking about Moose Creek here.
That one was.
Yeah.
Oh, I know. That was Chrysler, actually.
Yes.
When I, when I look at these, the C E O, A G indicates that there's no compliance or operational issues for the Chrysler and Finch systems. And of course, there was page nine does outline some algae growth, which is problematic.
Yeah.
According to, to Aqua from an operational perspective, but I don't believe there were any compliance or efficiency issues.
There was no non-compliance, which is a good thing to, to maintain. And, and it's, you, you get the ups and downs for the seasonal timeframe and you basically, it's, it's because the, through the summer, you're trying to break down all the suspended solids, you, you the ammonia, the phosphorus and all this, it's breaking down. But when you get into the short days, cooler days, less cloudy days and stuff, you lose that kind of a breakdown. So it's, it's in the springtime when you want to discharge that you, it's a concern for suspended solids, which we're always in compliance with. There was a, a, we always had a high objective, overall objective, objective is what they're trying to meet. But compliance, it's a different level. So, but this is going to be resolved with the E C A and the expansion in the mainly Moose Creek. Chrysler discharges almost always good. So, but I did talk to Dawn about future reports and adding in the more comments. She was quite willing to do that since she don't have to come to council meeting at nighttime. No, but it's double things that I understand and Dawn explains and you know, you can't know everything. But I've been, I've been around a long time, but I mean, new council can't know everything to, to they don't get paid enough for that. I couldn't.
No, we know even less. We know even less. And that's it. So when I see a line go above
Yeah.
a limit like on page six, where, where sample three, I don't know how to read that. Sample three, it says that we went above the E C A limit, which is above the E C A objective. Then I start saying, should I be concerned or not? And, and so just if, if Dawn was to highlight and say, you know, on this graph, it's above, but no concern because we took this action or no concern because it's, it's based on weather or, and it's, those types of things would help.
An objective is not a compliance issue. It's a goal they try to meet.
There's, there's objective, but then on top of that, there's another line that says limit in that, that word sounds stronger than objective. So I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah.
Page six.
If I can add to that, at the end of the day, I think it's to try to understand these engineering reports and technical reports is very hard for council to understand. And if we're trying to ask questions on something that we're not quite sure, where if Dawn says, oh, here, we're doing very well. Over here, we do have concerns if this doesn't, you know, regulate itself. And then just put something for us to actually start thinking of what we, at the end of the day, we need a system that's operational. It's a system that's compliant. And we also want to not get caught, similar to Moose Creek, where what do you mean? We don't have allocation. So we want to know ahead of the game where, okay, let's start thinking about a, a second well or a third well, that kind of stuff for water and same thing with lagoon cells. So with Chrysler, I did put the question to Blake, we only do, we're allowed two discharges in Chrysler per year. We've only done one, I think, forever. We, we've never done two discharge. So my question is, if we do two discharge, does it give us more capacity or not? So that's kind of the questions that I'd like to move forward because right now, as far as I was kind of worried with the economy and, and the uncertainty with tariffs and people not sure where their jobs are going. So it was kind of a concerning, but right now the housing market in Chrysler, in Moose Creek are, they're both. So there's a bunch of permits that more than what was anticipated. So now they, they're talking, start phase three. I just don't want to get caught where we now have to start pulling the reins because we don't have capacity. So.
Like if, there is no concerns right now, like the Chrysler system, as in capacity wise, we're running about fifty-five percent of our capacity. So I think it's five hundred and eighty doors, more that we have capacity on as we went through the the map, the wastewater, water master plan that right now, there's no highlight on lagoon system in, in Chrysler for the next twenty years. So going back to when we discussed the master plan and this, that we're going to most likely need to have another master plan done in maybe the next ten years, depends how the growth goes. So right now, the math plan gives you a trend. So if our trend really climbs higher, we're going to know long ways ahead of time that we're going to want to come to council, talk to you, say, well, here's what we're looking at, here's what going to be an example of what we have to do, start doing, looking at another E C A, looking at basically the, some of our pump houses would be more of a concern than the lagoon systems, once Moose Creek is fixed. And and we'll do the same thing for the water. So not say on this council, but this Moose Creek is brought up fifteen years ago. That we didn't have capacity there. If we get growth and we'd never had growth for a long time in Moose Creek besides infill. So now we got it and we weren't prepared for the growth because it was kind of last minute when all this stuff started to take off. So, but then if we stay on top of it, the council after council can look at it and hopefully the next ten years, I'm not still working here, but the, you're going to have lots of heads up. Like we, we finally got a full master plan done that showing the trends and not trends, but showing the capacities and water and this and that. So once we start to see the amount of capacity that we're giving out, long before, like we get to that point, we're going to have to say, okay, we, we want to start this. We want to start, you know, looking for a new well. I know it's hard. It's nice to say, but I know it's hard for council to say, let's spend money now that we don't know we're going to have to use for the next fifteen years. And that was always been the problem in the past, that, and I understand it. But time is, you, you don't want to charge your taxpayers more and they get, if they don't need the service and it's not even getting close to the capacity and you want to start, you know, ahead of time.
The metrics, yeah, is to identify.
Yeah.
And see where we're at, where we need to be.
And then when we, we see the projections going, then we, we come to council and say, look, you know, we don't want to get caught again. This is what we should be doing.
Perfect. Any other discussions on this? Seeing none, all in favor of the waste system water annual report? Motion is carried. Moving on to the R F Q P W dash oh one dash twenty twenty five in regards to our lawn cutting, Madam Clerk.
The council of the township of North Stormont receives report P W O seven dash twenty twenty five from the public works department and awards R F Q P W dash zero one dash twenty twenty five lawn cutting locations to E C Works Limited, for Lloyd, Son and Sons Lawn Care and Brent McIntyre, moved by Council Shane, second by Council Vigeli.
Thank you. Let me just get caught up here. So just for councils, so we do have Mister Durant's, which had concerns. So there's an email, I believe, that went to council to and he is present with us tonight just to listen in on the findings. So I will take questions from members of council. Go ahead, Counselor Vigeli.
So I guess I'll just, just start with the obvious question when it, when it does come to votes that are actually matching in number, which determination and if it is like our, the outstanding factors that, that weigh in the decision on that. And is something like looking at local as opposed to outside of our, our municipality, something that's taken into?
Before you, before Blake talked. So we also have, Kim, are you with us? I see your name. Is your, is your microphone on?
Well, I can start off before.
I'm here, sorry. Um, I was, the host has stopped me talking. Maybe that's a good thing.
So wait, did, did you hear Counselor Vigeli's question?
Yes. So, um, according to the procurement by law, you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, according to the procurement by law, section fifteen point eight, lowest price may not necessarily be the best option. And there is other provisions in section five that allow for some determination by the department head awarding the contract. So it, it doesn't only base it on price. It doesn't only base it on local. It, it has a number of factors that can be considered. So there's ability, capacity and skill, ability of the vendor to fulfill the contract, character, reputation, integrity, experience, efficiency, quality and performance of previous contracts or goods and services undertaken of the vendor. Vendor's financial resources, ability of vendor to provide future maintenance, location is a consideration. But it's not the only consideration. And so the department heads gets to evaluate the best value for service. It may not be the lowest price. It may not be the closest individual or firm. But the department head has recommended the best value for service to the municipality. But the department head has recommended the best value for service to the municipality. And that's what the Public Works Director has put into this report.
Thank you. Did you want to add?
Oh, yes. Not not going with that, all the stuff that Kim has said. So what we what we looked at. Counselor, no, this is a one plus one. So so the second year would be. Basically, we just carry on if. The workmanship is satisfactory to the to the rate, well, to the township.
And is one plus one for both ways? Them and ourselves?
It's got to be both agreeable. So. So anyway, when we we looked at the ties, we looked at, I think you have the the spreadsheet. Everybody's looking at it. So. Basically, the overall picture where. We gave two to Glode and Sons Lawn Care, lowest price. They were tied with. McIntyre for the St. Luke Cemetery. But knowing the. The evaluation of McIntyre maintains roadside lawn cutting in that area. By the cemetery, both sides of the road. And being a tie and him being right there. It it was more practical for the benefit of the township to have a better area cut than to have. Just to have the cemetery cut. It it's so. That was my decision on that. I don't think there'd be any repercussions on that to say. What it is and another note that shouldn't come into the situation. Brent has been maintaining that before we started taking it over with no pay. For years until we get into the tendering and all this. So going back to the the question in hand here, we looked at. An overall. Pricing. For the remaining of the contracts. So if you look at the the two categories. To say you want you want to split one. That are tied. Just to to say you want to split it, the overall price difference is a per cut was. Eight hundred and twenty and second bidder was eleven hundred. So. Maybe you look at, you got low prices, but we all know contracts got to make money. So to, if you gave us a real good price on some other ones, which you see in the in the, is it in green on your your screen?
No.
No? Okay. So you're looking at the prices on on the lower bids between the the two. Uh, contractors. That overall, there's a two hundred and ninety dollars, two hundred and eighty dollars difference per cut. So. Not to discriminate against anyone going for the second year. Or if you take, you know, they don't always have to, we we promote this, they don't have to take it. You know, like, once you council pass the resolution, they have, they put a bid in, but they're not mandatory that they have to do it. If you're. They, you know, they can always. But not to not to get into that kind of a situation, which I'm sure everybody will take on their job. But that was the the basic reason for looking at how we want to do it. Minimize the contractors for correspondence for billing. So it's not multiple places trying to say, well, this, you know, this guy did this one. And you know, it's just makes it a little more simplified. And looking at the the cemeteries, oh, no, sorry, the fire halls for the fire chief. It works out that. She has one contractor. And they had one tie. So it. It's. I mean, administrate, it costs money for us to administer all this stuff. And the more you're comfortable you get, and if you have a basic reason why you say, well, it's two hundred and eighty dollars. Between the two. And you you have the one contractor to manage for. The multiple places, the fifteens, they're looking after. Twelve of them. You know, it's. It's it's, that was my theory on how to do it. It's up to totally up to council to decide, but.
So looking at both columns or all four columns, the fact that one side has a difference overall of two hundred and eighty. Roughly dollars per cut difference in in total in total cuts. Craig, did you, I thought you went, did you want to add?
No, I was just going to interject and and Blake already kind of spoke to the item, but. One of them is for efficiency and ease of of management of of the contracts. And the example I was going to use was the one for the for the fire halls. I'd prefer to have one point of contact for the fire chief to be able to contact if there is an issue with one of the cuts. Uh, I prefer not to have contracts issued to individual contractors for these sites. Just for ease of reference and and management for our senior managers. They have enough. Uh, work on their plates and this would just streamline that process. So as far as fire and fire, fire stations, that was my only point.
Okay, so I'll take questions from members of council. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Denton.
Well, thank you for explaining the process and it it makes sense. I mean, at the end of the day, it's hard to know how to exactly break a tie. Um, and I get I get the process. Uh, again, and I know, Kim, you've spoken to me about this before as well. That within our procurement policy and within the provincial law, it actually says that. Geography is shopping local, although I support shopping local. It can't be a driving factor in in the decision making process in the sense that it can create an unbalanced. An unbalanced. Compete competitive. You look like you want to say something, Craig?
No, I just, I I think we failed to speak to one important item and and you prompted me for it is. Uh, many of these contractors do employ. Individuals from our township. So it's it's not isolated to one company. There are several companies that have employees that work in our township. So whether the company is actually located physically in our township, there are employment benefits. To the township if we were to award it to a number of these companies. So.
Kim, Kim, did you want to add to that?
Uh, yes, I I would through you, Mr. Mayor. The the also, you know, considerations for administration from my side anyways. Is the the ease of administration to to deal with. Not twelve contracts, but limiting them. And also that's for contact purposes, but not only that, it's the cost of processing. Multiple invoices on a monthly basis versus one. It, the costs do add up. So even though the contract price might seem slightly higher, the cost of administering, the lower ones may outweigh it.
Yeah, and just to finish my comments, again, it's never really a good practice for. Council to get too in too much into the details of specific contracts. We're here to re respect and make sure that whatever you've done has been well thought and has been has been. You know, vetted through a fair process and I I think from what I'm hearing, it's a fair process. I'd encourage all of our contractors to please continue to submit bids. We want to see, we want to see the competition out there. Um, and we want to see local businesses supported. So please continue to. To do so. But again, what you've shared with us to me, sounds like it was it was a well thought process. So thank you for sharing that.
Any further questions? Counselor McDonald.
So. One thing I'll acknowledge for sure is like the need for efficiency on billing and whatnot. I figured when I saw. How it was done, that that made sense, but something you said earlier kind of made me think in. Is is EC Works able to sort of bid so low on a few because on the basis of winning a number of jobs? Like, is it, is and then if they didn't get a certain number of awards, would they maybe not accept the the jobs? Because they really undercut on quite a few, which makes me wonder, is that the cost for them? And if they're not even close by and local, how how are they able to offer like such a half price bid?
Well, I won't get into the worst mistake that EC Works made. But they they do have two full time employees in North Dormont. The foreman for EC Works lives in Moose Creek. There's. Two full time, two part time. There's a person in Finch. They do maintain the upper Canada School Board. Grass cutting in our area here, Taguar Rocksmore. They they came in low here because they used to do this place. They know exactly what time it takes. Maybe they have a little more efficient equipment, it which could save them time. So it's it's. It's not that they can't do it. They're in the area. They have other. Contracts in this area and they're driving through and they then they have the capability if they're increasing their. Their manpower, the equipment, like that's not something I should. Get involved in, but I did discuss about sometimes that some of the low bids there. Where especially the the new municipal office. That, you know, I just basically questioned, you're sure you're you're good with that? And he said, well, I used to do it until they closed. So I just went with that contract and just to make sure before I award stuff that they're comfortable to accept the contract. If I'm recommending it. And not to get into, they didn't know any prices. I just wanted to, I just say, well, you're kind of low. Are you, you know, did you, you know, basically you're good with that number? And if they gave me a satisfied thing, then I look ahead at the process of doing it. And they they did. And Eric knows this, they. Whenever we sent out the tender quotation. We sent out actual photos of the property lines. Basically, it's. When they printed off the old office. It didn't print all out. So you only seen the east side of the building. And they just put the number on it and but they willing to accept that. That price, he said they bid that price. With the overall. Uh, work they have in the area where they. You can guarantee they're going to lose air, but they're going to gain a little bit some other places.
And you're comfortable with the company? Like you've worked with them before and?
Well, they've been doing, well. They used to do the snow up to the year before for our. Municipally, north, uh, Moose Creek Rec. Uh, Monklin and Moose Creek Hall. And they've been doing the for three years now, they've been actually cutting the grass. I didn't know this until they told me at the public school in Abmore, which is just. I can see them come in and they do it, they come in, get out and go. So.
And the last question I had, sorry, I just had three there. We're not questioning, well, sort of questioning, but. The efficiency thing makes sense, but the other thing that just came to mind when I was thinking about on the weekend was. Sometimes you do lose contractors and it is nice to have someone else who could pick up for almost the same price, pick it up. So sometimes it's nice, especially with, I think, grass contracting, no offense, but I do. It's happened to us at South Nation, it's happened at Raisin, where people drop out because they find, you know, different type of work. And so there are people that do kind of tend to come in and out of the business and new businesses pop up and whatever. So. Although it's nice to have efficiency and have one company, it it might be also nice to know that you've got a diversity of contractors available. If one drops out and kind of disappears on you and then you can have a backup. So. Again, I think it's it's important that we support local businesses and it's important that people understand how we do our procurement processes. And that people feel that there's a fairness in working with the township. So balancing and prioritizing all those things are the responsibility of staff, responsibility of department heads and of course of the treasurer and C A O. So I respect the deliberations that you made. I think it's also fair for people from the public to raise questions when they feel they need to. So. That's it.
Thank you. So. Uh, at my end, so the fact that we do have a gentleman that had some concerns that came. He's about my kid's age. He looks, so the fact that he's a young guy, you're you're starting your business. You're working in in our township. So more power to you now. At the same time, our mandate from the five of us here is to. Look at. Rolling the the municipality, looking at costs, looking at, we defer, we defer or not defer, but defer on to our. Directors to give us the information. I understand if if we go, especially when you're dealing with cemetery and the little fire hall. And so there's a lot of work in pieces. And if you had four or five multiple. Bids or or companies you're dealing with, you're now sending, like it's easy for one report to say, there you go for. Six or eight that you're that you're doing. So that part under our administration, I see the value in. Second is the fact that you're. That two hundred and eighty that we're talking about is a number that that's each cut. That we see the the benefit could potentially be over two years. Uh, and then last is in regards to dealing with. Making sure that, hey, how is this done? You make one phone call, you can set it. So the benefit is there for that part. My question is, when the tender did go out, do we have protection that if we feel? And I drive by every, sorry, I drive by every night coming back from work. And last thing I want to see is looking at my administrative new office and the grass looks like. So that's something that I want to make sure. And if it's not done to. Our, and I'm not saying we're princesses wanting to, but if it's not done properly, that's when. Never burn your bridges because there's always a time where we can maybe recontact our our other. Quotations that were put in to say, hey, can you help us out? So it's, that's just my thought. But Blake, maybe just to cover, do we have?
We we have the capability of in our quotation that if we're not satisfied, we have like basically a dispute. Process and and then we can. Use our experience and and our stuff where we, you know. We say we're not satisfied, either you have to step up your. Your game or do whatever we see is going wrong. That we we could.
There for us to.
Yeah.
And last is if I was to maybe low bid some as Counselor, I think McDonald mentioned. Chances are you low bid some because of the volume. So if you have eight different sites. Okay, so if you're not getting eight different sites, now you're down to four. Well, maybe all of a sudden now it's not worth your time to drive down to do those. So it could alter and in the end. You know, we have the contract now, but in the end, it might come back to bite us where we're not getting the the. The value for for the tendering process that we went through. So. Thank you very much, Blake. Thank you, Kim. Uh, any last questions in regards to the tender before we go move to the motion? Uh, so there there is no, because of there's no delegation that we should have been prior to. So you can, for now, the decision will come from council. By no means, though. You can reach out to your council members, like if you do have questions, give me a call, but the decision will come. So the point of view is just that there's many people that have come to or to our meetings and it's well. Written in the minutes where municipalities, council do not take in. If I start one. Then it snowballs because, oh, you let Mr. Durant talk. So it's something that, like I said, one on one. You you can relate, but we can't have you speak and and so your mind on on this specific topic. Perfect. Thank you. So with that said, moving on to the motion, maybe I I still can, do you want to maybe reread the motion and the? The movers and seconders?
That the council of the town of North Dormont receives report P W O seven dash twenty twenty five from the public works department. And awards RFQ dash P W dash zero one dash twenty twenty five lawn cutting locations. To EC Works Limited, Glode and Sons Lawn Care and Brent McIntyre, moved by Council Shane, seconded by Council Vigeli.
So as the motion's read, all in favor? Against? So motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to our municipal bylaws, item ten point one, bylaw number twenty seven dash twenty twenty five in regards to drain maintenance cost.
Be resolved that bylaw number twenty seven dash twenty twenty five being a bylaw to assess and levy the maintenance costs for various drains within the town. North Dormont. As for the attached schedules, one to twenty nine. Be read a first, second and third time, passed, signed and sealed and open council this twenty second day of April twenty twenty five. Moved by Deputy Vera Denton, seconded by Council Shane.
Thank you. So Sean, Sean, or is Kim gonna?
Through the chair, Kim will address this report.
So I have, don't don't read line for line, Kim, please. But if you can give us the the assessment.
Sorry, I I just wasn't allowed to be unmuted through the the chair. The. The purpose of this is to get permission to basically put the drain costs on the rolls. This one's being pushed a little. Um, this one's being pushed a little earlier than usual because of a pending postal strike. We're trying to get our tax bills out earlier than usual. Um, this bylaw indicates that any maintenance under five dollars is written off. For maintenance that is assessed over five hundred dollars, the, uh, the residents are given until August twenty ninth to pay. Uh, those four ninety nine and less are directly added to the tax rule. So the schedule shows all the different amounts that are being added to the different roles for the drains. And like I said, we need permission to do that prior to the tax bills going out.
Thank you. So I'll start the question. So are we looking at as far as arrears on the drain? Is that an issue or is that something that basically gets, uh, basically on an annual basis or is this annual that we deal with this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it is. Um, the the thing with this is like those under four ninety nine are added to the tax rule. So they will become part of the arrears issue if they're not paid. Same with the other ones, the bills, uh, the ones over five hundred, uh, they are given till August twenty ninth to pay. But if they do not pay those, they're subject to the same one point two five percent per month. And they will be in in the total of the amounts owing by the residents on their tax rule.
But my question is, overall, with all these going out, say, by the the deadline, the August twenty ninth in the past, is it something that we need to worry about? Or in percentage wise, is it something that's kind of gets taken care of?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, it it's kind of the overall taxation. And if some people have it, some people don't. So to comment, it would have to do an analysis on who's paying for the drains and who's not. So I really, I I really don't have a good answer for you.
And I'm just looking, do we have an overall amount of what it is that's, uh, I'm not sure if the bottom line determines or is it just individually?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is done by our deputy treasurer, I believe it's by drain, I don't have a total amount, I'm sure I could figure it out.
Yeah, okay, nope, that's good. Any questions coming from the council? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
It's just more a comment than a quick question. I don't think these are uncommon bills to what people have received in the past, generally speaking, in the amount, unless there's some significant changes or maintenance done to a drain, I don't think they're unusual. And I remember, for whatever reason, adding them up sometime last term and it was in the tens of thousands, maybe as much as seventy thousand dollars when you add everything together, which is kind of ballpark where this is. So to me, it just feels like anybody who's getting these bills are used to getting them in the in the approximate amount that that they're likely going to get this year. So it is just business as usual for most people, I think.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in talking with the the deputy treasurer, there was no concerns, there was nothing that seemed to stand out as, oh, my goodness, this is, this is really totally an anomaly. So I I think we're we're on track as as usual.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Uh, moving to our correspondence, item eleven point one. Yes, that's it. To eleven point three, Madam Clerk.
It resolve that the correspondence as items eleven point one to eleven point three on the agenda be received, moved by councillor Shane, seconded by councillor Vigeli.
Any, so I guess with the Ministry for Senior and Accessibility, uh, that's been dealt with. Any further questions on our correspondence? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion's carried. Uh, moving on to new business, item fifteen point one, as far as our amended minutes for a special meeting of February twenty first, twenty twenty five.
That the council of the township of North Stormont amend resolution seventy seven dash twenty twenty five to approve the special meeting February twenty first, twenty twenty five minutes as amended to reflect the declaration of pecuniary interest by deputy mayor Dencham. Moved by deputy mayor Dencham, seconded by councillor Vigeli.
Oops, should I have moved that?
Just a little one. Right at the end, we're the mayor. Councillor Shane. Councillor Shania, anyway, it's just, it's a typo of councillor Shane's name.
I don't know most of the change in name.
Anyway, I could probably be corrected. Yeah, it's quite mine.
Perfect. Other than that, is there any, uh, all in favor? Motion's carried. Uh, so an item fifteen dash two, growing Canada's community canopies program.
Whereas the township of North Stormont continues to have an interest in increasing urban tree canopy within the municipality. And whereas the township has already approved two thousand dollars for twenty twenty five, resolution number three thirty dash twenty twenty four towards partnering with South Nation River Conservation Authority on the funding submission to growing Canada, Canada's canopies.
Order? Of the way. All in favor? Motion is carried. Any discussions? The none, all in favor? Motion is carried.
Sorry?
Fifteen point three or fifteen point two?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Snow is a point border is not to go and read the whole thing, correct?
Yes, yes.
So I still need to.
Thank you.
Ask for question, Kim. So that said, so are we down to our scheduled meeting?
No, we're on fifteen point three.
Oh. There we go. Yep, so item fifteen point three, I, uh, you go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Whereas the township of North Stormont has had applied for a grant through the Ontario Fire Marshal's Office and resolution number two sixty eight dash twenty twenty four was passed to approve expenditures up to fifty thousand five hundred continued on grant approval. And whereas the township was notified that they were successful in receiving grant funding for the fire protection grant twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five for the purchase of specialized extractors for thorough cleaning of firefighting gear, commercial washer dryers and decontamination units. And whereas the township was provided with an additional funding amount of three hundred and sixty one dollars and seventy three cents. Now therefore, the township of North Stormont approves amending resolution number two sixty eight dash twenty twenty four to prove expenditures up to fifty thousand eight hundred and sixty two to formalize the additional grant allocation, moved by councillor Shane, seconded by councillor Vigeli.
Okay, so I'll start on this one. What exactly are we, we had already passed this. So now are we just basically because we have an extra three hundred and some dollars? We have to, so maybe clarify that, Madam, or?
Sure.
Fire chief.
Uh, my apologies to the chair. Uh, it is a formality, uh, because we have a signed contract with the province and now we're amending that said contract. We have to just bring it to council and advise you that we're doing and they would like a motion to said that we have knowledge into uh, council that we're doing this, it's just an extra funding that they had.
So through that, though, what's the implication? So there's no additional funding that's required by?
Council, no.
Council by town, by the township. So it's basically just for the fact that they're giving us an extra three hundred and seventy one dollars?
Correct.
We have to go through this formality?
Yes, I know it's a huge formality.
For the record, what was the amount that township at budget time? What did we allocate to get the fifty? What was our portion? Do you recall?
Uh, it it was almost twenty thousand dollars, your portion, and we received thirty three something, I'd have to check the numbers again. Uh, so we were able to, we were granted thirty three thousand dollars plus, yeah, I had to stay within that fifty. So your portion will be a little less than twenty, plus now the three hundred and sixty one seventy three. Um, we'll come to, um, that's all right.
Any questions? Go ahead.
No, just thank you for clarifying because I couldn't remember this, how it played out. Actually, I I thought we were paying fifty thousand five hundred, um, and we were only getting three hundred dollars, but we're to go towards it, but we're actually already received thirty thousand, now we're getting an additional three hundred. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Now moving to our scheduled, uh, next meeting of April twenty third, which will be tomorrow morning, committee of adjustment meeting at eight thirty. We have our committee of the whole on April twenty ninth, uh, with all of our rec committees. May thirteenth, which is our regular meeting of May, as well as May twenty seventh, uh, for our regular meeting, both at six P M. Moving on to coming events. We've got the grand opening of our township building. So for those that are aware, May first, uh, twenty twenty five, we're going to have a, an open house starting at four o'clock till six. I just had a brief discussion with our C A O. I would like to see possibly having the the opening remarks, speeches and the ribbon cutting early on. So by four fifteen, four twenty, and then the remainder will be where there will be refreshments. We can then have an open house where people can tour not only the municipal, new municipal office, but as well as the the daycare facility. So I do welcome our residents to come and see. I think, I think this building will serve us well for many years to come and I think it's something to be proud of. So, uh, I'm guessing all of council, uh, will be in attendance, perfect.
And will have active participation, as the mayor's aware and council's aware, from our daycare partners with some of the children participating in the events.
So the the invites have been sent out to all different dignitaries, we actually contacted, sorry? Tomorrow morning, okay, the school board, the invite has been sent for our, my my local officials at the county council were were brought into this this morning. So anyways, again, I'd like to, uh, put it out there and maybe that's something to have our website uh, put on for the general public that get the opportunity to come and see their new office. Moving on, is there any other events? Go ahead, councillor or?
Just as a closing remark to remind everybody that election day is on Monday, so make sure everybody gets out to vote. Uh, if they haven't, we had record turnout, said advanced polls over seven million Canadians, so I'd encourage everybody to get it and vote on Monday.
Thank you. And if we can just quickly, I hope council, because it's also good for council to see, I see that the events going through our month of April. Maybe Pierre will talk to see if we can maybe jump ahead so that we, because I see here where April seventeenth, April twentieth and twentieth has gone by. Uh, I know we get the agenda on the Thursday, but it's something maybe if we can, I know it's a hard request, but if we can get maybe the month of May to come in April so that, especially councils, sometimes you you want, if they, if the dates are set and available, it wouldn't be a bad thing to promote it instead of telling us what's gone by. So that's just my personal opinion. But, uh, again, it states every community has their Facebook and webpages where you can also go and have a peek and get your I like to be spoon fed myself, so anyway, so that is good. There's no closing remarks, so moving to our ratification by.
Be resolved that bylaw number twenty eight dash twenty twenty five being a bylaw to adopt, confirm and ratify council's actions at its regular meeting of April twenty second, twenty twenty five. Be read a first, second and third time, passed, signed and sealed in open council this twenty second day of April twenty twenty five. Moved by deputy mayor Dencham, seconded by councillor Shane.
All good questions or all in favor? All in favor, thank you, and our adjournment, please.
Be resolved that this regular meeting adjourned at seven oh five P M, moved by councillor Vigeli, seconded by deputy mayor Dencham.
All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much to a member of council, I see three nothing Ottawa, after two minutes of play, kidding. But I can say, go, I'm actually at the game on Thursday, so go, sends go and, hey?
I'll be there on Saturday.
I'm there on Saturday as well, hey? Yeah, no, no elimination, hey? We're still on, yeah, I'm telling people that go, sends go.